Doctor Stole, you should be live now.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I call to order the May 24th, 2020 regular board meeting of the Westlake City School District. Roll call.
Stole.
Here.
Craft.
Here.
Fanukin.
Here.
Wazinski.
Here.
Purna.
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Next up is acknowledgement of visitors. I believe we do have some visitors. We'll address those in a little minute, but before that, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved?
Second.
A roll call, Mr. Hopkins.
Craft.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Wazinski.
Yes.
Purna.
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, next up is public content comment. The public may address the board during the periods of the meeting designated for this time. Each person addressing the board shall give his/her home and home name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is limited to three minutes until the total time allotted is used. During this period, no person may speak twice, and all who desire to speak will have had the opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present in voting. Do we have anyone up for public comment?
We do. We're bringing them in the room right now.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. First, I want to let you know that I have a vocal cord issue. So if you don't hear me on something, please ask me to repeat it. I appreciate your patience. My name is Libby Tameus. I live at 278-44 Bassett Road, which is two houses west of the Bassett Road driveway. The Westlake Schools' decision to direct all non-school bus traffic for grades fifth through eighth from Dover to Bassett for drop-off and pickup has generated several issues that not only affected the residents, but it affected the senior community located off Bassett, other drivers, business vehicles, pedestrians, school walkers, and bike riders. This also affected our properties with damage as well as our state of mind. Last year, Eric and I met with the school administrators, councilman O'Donnell, and the other stakeholders, and we discussed our concerns. We offered some recommendations, and we laughed in hopes that the school administration would take everything into consideration and come up with a workable solution. Instead, our pleas fell on deaf ears. When we then continued to pursue of having the administration to rectify the hazardous conditions that were created due to the traffic jam by the decision to move the traffic to Bassett, we were all very, very frustrated. Again, we met, we discussed, we inquired about several factors to help the administration make good decisions. We were responded with comments such as, "No money, traffic isn't bad." Lots of head shaking, but not really listening to us. What he really meant is, again, it fell on deaf ears. We share our concerns about the accident involving motor vehicles, which have occurred, accidents involving people, which have occurred, including hitting a car hitting the traffic tractor that's at Bassett Road.
Please try and wrap her up.
I do believe I can get an extension. I appreciate that. Damage to our properties, and of course, discourteous drivers and disrespectful to the point where I was threatened with bodily, physical abuse by a parent because she mentioned that she was told for this school board, this is what she had to do to drop off her kids at school. I was greeted by a language I can't even repeat. And worst part is, emergency vehicles cannot make it through that traffic. It is unfortunate that we were brushed off again. We have difficulties getting out of our driveways, difficulties getting in. Mr. Crab, Joe Craft came out Friday, and I have to say, he had to put in a very big hat. He was diverting traffic, he was directing traffic, he diverted a car almost hitting a pedestrian. He did everything he possibly could. But again, that wasn't enough because earlier today, a child got hit by a parent coming out of the driveway. We have brought this to your attention numerous times. You collect our taxes from the levy every year for capital improvements. We're asking you to make the right decision. Funny thing is, this afternoon, I received an email from Mr. Kosefar saying that immediate action was taken, and surprised, the traffic was light. Why did it take all of this to make a quick decision since Friday? And telling us that it's an impossibility. The red brick building is down. Let's use that land to create a better cue for parents to drop off, come in and get out. We're demanding that you put the school bus traffic off of Bassett and move the car traffic back to the main artery. Because back in 2010, 11, 12, when all this was sold to the voters, it was sold that that would never have traffic like we're experiencing. It was going to be emergency vehicles only and for special events. And that came from Mr. Puffer. Because I went back and looked at all the notes. I know my time's running out. And I do appreciate your time and the fact that you are considering making changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and limit your time to three minutes, please. Thank you.
My name is Vito Monteleone. I live at 277-34 Bassett Road. I saw, the reason why I'm here is obviously because I'm concerned about the traffic on Bassett with the, in regards to the schools. So we've been told a number of things when the school, before this whole project started and what that driveway was going to be utilized as. And it's changed a number of times from what I, you know, understand. But my big concern right now is the fact that all the, all the traffic that we have is causing inconvenience to the residents. I've had to fix my tree lawn three times now since the beginning of the year. I even went as far as putting a big rock in the tree lawn, so people don't do that anymore. I'm actually at the, near the north, not North Glen, Glenmore. So what people try doing is they come off of Glenmore, and they do like a three-point turn, trying to sneak into the traffic. And, you know, and it's causing damage to the tree lawn. It may seem petty, but, you know, I want to keep up the lawn, so I'm out there and I'm fixing it. That's one of my concerns that I have. The other issue that I have is the fact that I can't just exit my driveway when I want to leave or get in. I have three kids. And my daughter Sophia, when I, I want to make sure that I am able to get home, so she's not, you know, by herself. And there's been times when I had to, you know, I got there about 12:45, between 12:45 and 1 o'clock, and I get there and the traffic is all jammed up, and I can't get into my driveway. So I have to rearrange my schedule in order to do so, which sometimes, you know, just not able to do that. So that's another concern that I have. The other concern and the big issue is safety. As far as, you know, again, I've got three kids, myself, my wife, if something were to happen at that particular time, and I need to call EMS, fire, police, whatever the case may be, the response time may be limited with the traffic and the jam up that's there. That could inhibit, you know, an emergency from being resolved. So, and I mean, that's huge. And we also have that, our house, senior living down the street, on a daily basis, I mean, at least once a day, we have an ambulance going down there. And you can't predict what time that's going to happen. I mean, that could happen between, you know, 12:45 and 1:15, which is like the biggest time for that traffic jam. I understand today, there was an incident, a young girl, her name is Bridget. She was involved in a, an incident with, was she tried crossing the street? She got hit by a car. So it's kind of one of our worst fears, that would happen. Again, I've got three kids. I don't want that to happen to my child. Everything is kind of done, I don't think there was enough thought put into this whole process. You know, Dover Center is equipped with a turning lane. They also have marked out school zones. They have traffic lights. They have the, everything that's needed, you know, according to, according to law, correct? But yet, on Bassett Road, we have no actual school zone. There is no traffic light. There's no, you know, sometimes we have police officers, sometimes we don't. I know Rick, he's an auxiliary police officer. He's not there all the time. On the days that he's not there, there's been times when there's nobody there, and it's just chaos. So there's no signs. Whether it's, like, for instance, again, one of the issues that I'm, I hate is when people park in front of my, you know, stop in front of my driveway. I mean, there's no signs saying, please don't block driveways or slow, you know, watch out for kids, or whatever the case may be. You know, I just, I feel like this, there hasn't been enough thought. So recently now, I also understand that you've changed the, the, how the traffic is going in. And
Please try and wrap up.
Right. It's great, right. So, you know, you're getting more cars into the drive, right? So you're able to do that, but I feel that you should do it off of Dover Center. And you could bring in the same traffic, but bring it in and loop around, you know, use the whole school parking lot, right? But instead of exiting on Bassett, you should do it off of Dover, where it's very equipped, where you have the school zones and lights and whatnot. It seems like that's the way it should be, because that's also how it was, in my, my recollection, is how it was proposed. That driveway was supposed to be used for buses and emergency vehicles. And, you know, that's the way it should be, but things changed. And I'm not sure why they changed, but, you know, they did. There's a number of residents here that aren't happy with how it's been handled. And, you know, we just want some more accountability. And we want you guys to understand what we're going through. However petty you may seem to think that it is, you wouldn't like it if it was in front of your house. You know, if somebody was blocking your driveway, you wouldn't care for it. Just, you know, understand, you know, how other people may be, may be thinking. So.
All right. Thank you for your
Pretty much all I have to say, but.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Monteleone, how is Bridget? Do you know?
I don't know. I just found out it was Bridget.
All right.
I mean, I heard that it happened. I didn't know who the child was until now.
Thank you.
So.
Please state your Napoli. I live at 277-99 Bassett Road.
Please keep your comment brief to three minutes. Thank you.
We have a perfect storm here. Oh, hello.
If you heard that voice, that floor was coming.
And Bob, if you can, speak up or turn up your volume.
Okay.
Turn up the volume on the speaker.
Thank you. Could you, may I ask you to state your name and address one more time?
Kim Napoli, 277-99 Bassett Road.
Thank you.
As you've heard, we've got a perfect storm developing right in front of my house. My house is situated right in front of the entrance and exit of the school, the back entrance. And so I get, you know, I could see this twice a day. I've witnessed arguments from drivers. They get out of the car and actually are in the roadway arguing. We have people laying on their horns constantly. There's gridlocks. It's understandable that they're frustrated because gridlocks are, doesn't make people happy. So there's long wait times. The auxiliary officer was struck, wasn't serious, but, you know, we don't want anything serious to happen before we find some sort of urgency to, you know, change this traffic pattern. You know, I just think that safety and, you know, peace, you know, in our community should be, you know, the highest priority, you know. Happy neighbors, that would be. So I got about 25 signatures for our petition, if needed, for neighbors. And one guy said he had a concern that he wanted me to bring up tonight. He's not here. He, he's concerned about the city project where they're going to be renewing the water lines, and if this traffic pattern isn't fixed, and they start a new project, that could be very concerning. So we just want to make sure the school and the city works together on that, if there is a project in line for the water lines. And then I had another neighbor that was concerned about, she came to another school board meeting, I think it was last year, and she saw plans drawn out for the roundabout that was supposed to be constructed. And she just wanted to know what happened to those plans. And why did we get, you know, are we still working? Are we going forward with those plans? Or is this, you know, that's what we'd like to know. And that's it.
Ms. Napoli, if I may ask you, your drive, is that where Officer Grayne has been parking?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for making that available. I used that a couple of times last week as well. I wasn't able to thank you personally, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anything I can do to help, and I don't want to make any of the problems there exacerbate them in any sort of way. Just, I'm looking for, you know, a plan to diffuse it all, because I don't, I don't want any fights and accidents, anybody get hit. We did have an accident today. A little girl was hit.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
It was just a matter of time. So I appreciate, you know, you guys listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. President, we do have some more waiting to speak, but we've reached our 15-minute limit. Would you like to have a motion to extend public participation by 15 minutes?
Do I have a motion to?
Still moved? Second.
Roll call.
Craft.
Did you want any discussion, President Stole?
Yes, if people would like to discuss it, one of the things I'll say is, you know, we appreciate all of the comments. I do believe, you know, we're hearing the community. We are going to put this on the next meeting agenda, which would be June 14th. I believe we can solve this problem. Anyone else have any comments?
No.
I'm just asking the roundabout.
She meant the plans for potential roadway on Dover campus property.
I can talk about that in my report.
Okay.
Thanks.
Would you like me to call roll?
Roll call.
Craft.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Wazinski.
Yes.
Purna.
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good evening. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Katie Hunt. I live at 277-75 Bassett Road. Along with my husband, captain on the Cleveland Fire Department for 25-plus years of service, have major concerns on the safety issue due to the school traffic being directed by the Westlake Schools' grades five through eight to use Bassett entrance for pickup and drop-off. Number one, representatives lied to the residents with regard to the use intended for Bassett Drive. The traffic, 250 cars coming and going each morning and afternoon causes many safety concerns. Emergency vehicles are unable to get to the emergency, fire, EMS, and police. Please tell me how, when a box is called in, house on fire, and the fire department must dispatch five fire trucks, how will they easily navigate the mess of a traffic jam? Can you tell me where those trucks are going to go? With that, you've made the decision to significantly delay their arrival time if they need to reroute or get through the congested traffic. When seconds count, it will take minutes. Can you tell me when a neighbor of mine or the nursing home will have a fire or possible heart attack? You are sure gambling with lives in this neighborhood. Number two, safety for walkers and pedestrians. There are no crossing guards at either side street. Not only did Rick, the auxiliary police officer, get hit and spun around the other day, today at about 1:15, a child was crossing the crosswalk on her bike and was struck by a car. This is on you. Due to the congestions on many different days, when there are no officer directing traffic, vehicles will pull out of line, go left of center to get around the stop traffic in frustration. I counted 15 cars to do this in about a 10-minute timeframe when there was no officer directing traffic. If we could please have an officer every day directing traffic, we would appreciate that. Please tell me how that is safe. Lastly, vehicles blocking driveways. More often than not, cars block each driveway, leaving no way easily to get in and out of our driveways morning and afternoon. If we attempt to get out of our car, out of our driveways, on several occasions, we are cussed at, flipped off, honked at, and screamed at. Cars inch toward us, so we cannot get out. Some classy parents we have in Westlake. You cause their first frustration. I don't think you guys would like that interaction every day. Please put the traffic on your property, or else you will leave us no other option but to take legal action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello there.
Good evening. Please state your name and address, and please keep your
My name is Jill Monoc. I live at 2604 North Glen Drive. And I don't even have kids in the school. I'm here just as a resident. So I remember way back when that little cut-through off of Bassett was going to be put in. There were big meetings at that time. All of us were told, don't worry about it. When that cut-through goes in, it's going to be buses only or emergency vehicles. The only time that cars would be allowed in there would be special occasions like a soccer tournament or something like that, off-hours type things, things that would be happening in the evenings. They were going to just make sure that Bassett would be kept normal traffic, except for buses. And we were told that multiple times. We were also told that there was going to be landscaping and screening. Put down those, that long path there, so that you couldn't look into neighbors' yards. And I know some of the neighbors are saying when those cars go through, the headlights, you know, hit their house. So none of that got put in. And the traffic that I'm hearing about now is just absolutely crazy. And I think it's going to get worse as soon as all these COVID restrictions get lifted. Right now, I'm working from home, but the second I go back to the office, which should be September, you're going to have so many more cars now trying to use that, going to work, coming home from lunches, doing whatever they need to do. It's going to be a lot more traffic than what you're currently dealing with. And right now, it's backing up, you know, street to street, Dover to Hilliard. So it really is a big mess, and especially with you tearing down that building up on Dover. I just don't see why you can't come up with a good way to have all the traffic, all the car traffic, work its way through that somehow, lay down some kind of park paving for that. I really think that would be best. You've got, you know, school, you've got lights there. Everyone can tell it's a school. When you're on Bassett, you can't tell there's a school over there. You've got no idea. You've got turning lanes. You've got a wider street, much more open visibility, you know. There's just, there's no reason to be using a side street for that. It's really causing a lot of hassle. And now, an accident, I was also told, a policeman was also hit by a car. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. So I really, really hope you guys stick to what you told us initially before we all, you know, agreed that, okay, let's go ahead and do this, and just keep Bassett as a residential street like it's, it's designed to be. It's not meant to be a big, a big two-way. And in the meantime, if you can't do something right away, at least do something to help those kids out, help the traffic out. Get some crossing guards, get some policemen. You've got to figure out something for those roads.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Good. Name, Eric Kramer. I live at 278-26 Bassett. So I have a house immediately adjacent on the west-hand side of the driveway. You have heard the concern we all feel. Albeit convenience, safety, or damage to personal property, it has gone on too long. We hope the school would rise up, admit their failure, and advance corrective actions. Unfortunately, that is not the case. Nowhere in Westlake would the city or its residents support retail, fast food, or business with queuing and unsafe conditions to occur in the street. So why is the school any different? Now is the time to admit this plan failed. Now is the time to reject complacency and the chance of another school year with the same approach. Now, the school board should be looking at simple facts that school personnel have failed to know and present to date when we have met. How many teachers and admin single in, single out traffic? How many students? How many students will be riding the bus? The difference being that, that are arriving vehically. How many students? How many students will be riding the bus? The difference being that, that are arriving vehicular. Arrival timetables and the number of non-school vehicles on Bassett during these times. Now is the time to review and update policy and protocol for drop off and pickup. Now is the time to realize and admit COVID did not create this. And the hope that more kids ride the bus in the future relieve this issue will be offset by kids no longer learning virtually and increased traffic as Americans go back to work. My last bullet point, now we need to count our blessings that there has been no serious harm went away today. The elementary school was well thought out, taking vehicular traffic off of major arteries and dedicated turn lanes. Buses, albeit bigger, were much smaller in number and more considerate. Had access off the back residential street. Why is this lesson not learned and recreated at other schools? My commitment to you is as follows. I will not accept this failure to continue and be the plan for the following year. I will expect the school to correct this failure and return us to a safer neighborhood. I will volunteer my time to your staff as someone professionally that has presented, at numerous municipalities and cities regarding traffic plans, photometric lighting plans, and building plans. With the focus on getting controlled bus access from Bassett equivalent to Westtown for Westlake Elementary and cars from a major artery with crosswalks, traffic signals, crossing guards, and dedicated turn lanes. It's, the time is now for you admit this experiment was a failure and that there is a better way to serve the school parents and neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Those are all our public comment speakers, Mr. President.
Got all the comments. Okay. Um, first of all, I wanted to, to thank all of those with the comments. Please note, we take your comments serio- seriously. Uh, we hear, we listen. Uh, we will be discussing this at our next meeting, uh, which is June 14th. Um, I believe we can take some, uh, long-term action. Um, and also I, I hope that, and I think that we've done some, um, intermediate short-term action, which should hopefully alleviate the problem. But, um, we really need to look at this as a long-term solution. Any other comments from the board regarding this?
No.
Okay. Very good.
I have a quick question. My understanding was we have an officer there, uh, even if it's an auxiliary officer there every morning and afternoon?
Well, we do have someone dedicated to that and, uh, I'm not sure if it's every, I'm, I'm assuming it's every single day, but I'm not sure if he has a substitute if he's not there.
Okay. Can we find out if there's a substitute? If, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, Mr. Hopkins, please make sure this goes on the agenda for the, for the next meeting of June 14th.
It will be added.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next up we have approval of the minutes. We have minutes from, um, April 12th and, uh, April 26th. Uh, the members have had time to review and read these. Um, I just need, um, an aye for approval and, um, a nay for, or any abstentions. All those in agreement with the minutes?
Aye.
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 Any ayes? Okay. Minutes are approved. Uh, next up we have informative reports. Um, the first item is re- retiree commendation.
All right. Give me one second. I'm going to invite, uh, the first group in.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, we're here to, uh, honor our nine retirees from the Westlake City Schools. Um, I'm going to announce the people that aren't here. Susan Peace was a cashier at Westlake High School and retired as of July 1st, 2020. Sally Fetko was a social studies teacher at Lee Bernison Middle School. She retired as of October 1st, 2020. Kathy Allen was an assistant cook at the elementary school. She retired November 1st, 2020, and Nancy English was project link and a longtime cheerleading advisor. She is retiring as of June 1st, 2021. Now, it will give me great pleasure to introduce our four, our, our five retirees that are here and someone from the school that's going to speak about them. So first I'd like to introduce Kim, Kim Tucker, who will introduce our first retiree, Amy Spieth, who is a second grade teacher at Westlake Elementary School.
Good evening. I'm honored today to, uh, introduce Amy Spieth, uh, a well-known person around our district. She has been here for 36 years, uh, at Bassett Elementary School. She is, uh, one that, uh, everyone looks to. She's a very passionate person. If you know Amy, you'll see her in the community. She's all around, everywhere that you see. She advocates for her kids. She actually taught a year in Texas, so I learned something new a little bit today. She's actually 37 years in education, which is just phenomenal. Um, I've had the privilege of working with her at Westlake Elementary School for the last year, uh, and a half, two years. Um, and, uh, what I've learned about with Amy is that she is there for her, her colleagues. That she's known as a, a veteran staff member who they go to. And one of the coolest things for me was when we had, um, our building closure, Amy jumped right in to see how she could learn something new, engage her kids, and she was so excited about learning her own skills that she really didn't know as much until probably that time. Some of her little things. The other thing that I, uh, know about Amy is that she loves to do plays with her kids. And, uh, things, she wants them to be their own, so she likes them to bake their props. And she wants them then to be able to take them home. So that's been something that Amy is known for. And, um, Amy, I want to thank you for your service at, uh, you know, in Westlake Elementary School as well as Westlake. Although, um, we've been very honored to have your expertise with us. And, um, as you, um, retire, it's time for your family to get you married. All the time. And I think they'll keep you busy, but we wish you the very best. Thank you for everything you've poured into the children.
Our next retiree from Bernison Middle School is Kurt Fong, who teaches tech and pre-engineering. He will retire at the end of the school year. And to say some nice words about him is Bernison Middle School Principal Chris Gaffo.
Um, I'm really excited to talk about Kurt. This was my first year working with him. Um, and on a personal note, he was probably one of my first friends at Bernison, who always stopped me in the hallway when I was running through and saying, Chris, how are you really? Stopping into my office. Um, so, um, when I actually asked his colleagues to describe him, all of them said, you know what? Kurt's just a good human. And I think that's a really great way to describe him. Um, he's been in education for 21 years. He taught in Twinsburg, Cuyahoga Falls, Virgin. 21 here. Yes, I'm sorry. Um, he taught in Virginia and then obviously in Westlake. Um, he started out in instructional technology before he headed into the classroom. Um, when I sat down with Kurt and I asked him to share with me a little bit about his teaching career, um, he highlighted a couple of things that I thought were cool. Um, a while back when he first started with instructional technology, his push was to, uh, for the use of online resources and teacher webpages. Um, so think about how far we've come. He built curriculum for pre-engineering. He turned his classroom into a TV studio and he worked with national programs such as Kidwin and Junior Scholar Sprint Race. Junior Solar Sprint. This is what I'm miss about Kurt. Uh, when I asked him why he became a teacher, he said, I don't know. It just kind of happened. It's like, like, like the teacher gods chose me. Um, they couldn't have chosen you better because, um, he is fantastic. And if you have ever been in his classroom, he signs off or ends his lessons every day by saying, have a nice day. Be nice to each other, smile often, tell your mom and daddy love them, and do something good for the world. And so when I asked his colleagues, they said, um, please share that with the board because that truly, truly describes Kurt. So we appreciate all that you've done for the students here in Westlake.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, board.
Thank you.
For the opportunity to teach at Westlake.
Thank you.
Our next retiree actually retired before I started working here. She retired July 1st, 2020, and I'm quite jealous. Deb Watten was our IB coordinator at Westlake Elementary School and Kim Tucker is going to talk about her.
Come up here, Deb. Um, well, you know, Deb and I kind of, uh, started this journey together when she became a full-time. Uh, it was my very first year in Westlake and, uh, so we, we, we walked our, our journey together and, and had a path 20 and a half years in education. And, uh, she did a lot of long-term subs in a lot of, and she was really wanted by a lot of people. Uh, can you cover my class for this? Can you cover my class for that? And then the last couple of years, she rose to the top with her tech skills. And where, um, she became the one that everybody went to and it just carried on. It doesn't matter what position she had. If you had a problem, you went to Deb. Um, she helped me throughout and I will tell you that when, um, we had again, the building closure, she just rose to the top and put the resources in place, walked right alongside, uh, Principal Magistino and just really paved the path and did such a wonderful job. Um, Deb had to walk a tough journey. It's a new position. She didn't have any kind of a path that was already there. She had to make her own. And she is a problem solver, a risk taker for sure. She's got some strong shoulders because it wasn't always easy. Uh, but she was always one that went back to the table and said, how can I solve this? How can I help? Always went in to be along with her colleagues. I'll teach with you. Let me share my resources, my strategies. Always, always. She never kept things to herself. She always wanted to help. If you had a problem and you weren't sure about it, next thing you know, you came and she had a whole list of resources ready to show you. And, um, that's always been wonderful. And if people needed help, it went right to them. I know I did the same thing a lot of times. I'm like, how about I figure this out? Um, so I want to thank you for your time. It's been a wonderful journey, uh, walking alongside you right here in this building. Right? This is where we're, this is where we started together. And it's an honor to honor you today in your retirement. She has a beautiful granddaughter to spend her time with and, uh, in, in knowing. And they both love to sail. And so I will say as you go into your years, many more ahead and sail on. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next retiree is intervention specialist from Bernison Middle School. Deb O'Block. To talk about Deb will be Chris Yacko.
Um, so, so Deb, Deb has been teaching for 33 years, 25 of those being at Westlake at Lee Bernison. And she told me that she's taught every grade level and on every team. So she's got quite the experience. When I asked, um, when I asked Debbie why she became a teacher, she said that when she started college, she was actually a geography major because of her love of maps, which I thought was really cool. Um, but along the way, she was a babysitter for a boy named Jerry on her street that was handicapped. And his parents had told her that she just had this natural ability with him. And so that's what drove her into becoming a specialized teacher. Um, outside of the classroom, she is a mentor to refugee families, which I really wanted to share because she spent a lot of time, um, transitioning them to America, teaching them English and helping to find them jobs. Um, when I asked her colleagues to describe her, it was funny because, um, the, the ones that I asked all said, you know what? She's like a mentor to me. And I just thought that really spoke volumes about Debbie because each one of them saw her as a mentor. Um, they described her as dedicated, an active listener, strong pillar of Lee Bernison. Um, and they all said she never gave up on anyone, student or colleague. So, um, I think that is a great tribute to her because, um, just working with you for your Debbie, um, you've just been a great founding board and I've appreciated, um, you listening and our conversations and your support. Um, and I know the staff is greatly going to miss you. So congratulations.
Thank you. Very happy. Thank you. Thank you for all the years.
And finally, we have Cindy Keef, who just decided last week that she's going to hop into retirement. So I, I, I have to give a shout out to Dana, Kim, and Jen for getting everything ready for her so that we could celebrate her. So to talk about, talk about Cindy, I believe Kevin just stopped behind me. So assistant principal at the, at the middle school, um, Kevin Baird.
Hey.
Stand right here.
It's, it is my honor tonight to say a few words about Cindy Keef, who we found out last week is retiring after 28 years of spectacular service, uh, here for Westlake City Schools. She was a big part. I think when I got here, the first thing I heard was the foreign language was the fifth core. Uh, and that was a huge thing. And so that's, that's a very unique thing that I had not heard in any other place I've been in. Um, and Cindy is a big part of that. Um, you know, working with, uh, kids at the younger age groups for so many years, she's a big part of strengthening that amazing program that we have here in the district. Uh, over the course of her career, she taught grades five through eight, uh, which is so critical to building that foundational, foundational base for students, uh, foreign language acquisition. She spent 15 years working with the intermediate school, uh, prior to, uh, before joining Lee Bernison. Uh, she was involved with French and Spanish clubs. She coached track. Uh, she coached cheerleading. Uh, she coordinated storybooks for eighth graders and took them down to the kindergarten levels and elementary schools. Um, and of course she was always just an amazing ally of her exploratory teams and colleagues. On a personal level, one of the things that I always noted about Cindy is how much she would glow when she would talk about her time at the intermediate. She's glowing right there behind the, behind the. Um, and she was always, she would always smile and she would tell you a story about those times anytime she got a chance to. Uh, and that's always been something that I know that she really, really enjoyed her time at the intermediate program. So I asked Mark Brigar, her, uh, former principal, for a few words about Cindy. Uh, and one of the first things he said, and he's always hilarious. And the first thing he said, you know, when she gives out those Spanish names, she has to memorize two sets of names of hundreds of kids that she had to teach every single day. Uh, and that's what's important. She taught all students, not just high school level courses. She taught all students, whether they wanted to be there or not. She was there every single day with that, with that, that, the same positive attitude. And so it's really important that, that he wanted that to be noted, uh, how flexible she was with teaching those students, uh, and really, really working with those kids. Um, and I always concur that, you know, she was always there to take that period sub, to lend a helping hand whenever we needed it. And it's really, I'm really, um, excited that I got to work just four years with you Cindy. And we, we at Bernison are going to miss you. And we're going to wish you all the best with your retirement.
And uh, just want to comment, we're supposed to do the excellence award, I'll come over and talk. So uh, this evening, we, a lot of times we do the excellence award for our excellence and certified staff and classified staff. And however, we, we distributed those plaques early, so they're not here tonight. But I do have Evelyn Urban, Evelyn, if you can come up here for a moment, I just want to, um, one of the things that, that Evelyn's here for is, Dana, can you come here a second too? Is Dana helped out a ton, and you've heard her mentioned uh, earlier about getting uh, the plaques ready and all the things that she does inside uh, the school district, so she should be recognized. Uh, so thank you Dana for what you've done. Evelyn has more to say.
Um, I'm involved with the Educational Office Professionals of Ohio, which Dana is our upcoming president for the next term. And they had an award um, that I nominated Dana for, and I. The Jacqueline Myers Office Professional of the Year Award. And it was her all the way to the T. So I wrote a letter, Dr. Gagan wrote a letter, and our current president of um, the organization wrote a letter, and Dana was selected.
Yeah, I know. Well, and, and that's a good point. It's, it's really tough surprising your assistant because she really does everything anyway. That's, that's hard to do.
Okay, well, I'm gonna congratulate our retirees and excellence awards. Uh, we really appreciate all the work that everyone does for the school district. And next up is the informative report for the strategic plan.
So Dr. Stoll, at this time, we do have Tom Speaks um, here from the Impact Group. Uh, he and Chris Demaro has been, have been helping us uh, put together um, many of the components which Tom will go through, and uh, we can give a little bit of an update because I do know that Mrs. Pernat has been on one of the committees as well, so you could chime in too, and talk about your experience in developing some of this plan. So Tom.
Thanks for having me this evening. Really what we're talking about is just the, the progress of the strategic plan. We've been at this for some time. If you remember uh, the learning profile, gosh, back in March, we got that squared away. Learning profile really is your vision. Where are we going? What kind of kids do we want to create when we successfully have the kids go through Westlake? And that was done. Then we got into the portion of the strategic plan itself. And gosh, we've talked to, uh, we've talked to focus groups with your staff. We've had focus groups with parents. We've had focus groups with students, which are always a riot. They had the best stuff. Uh, we had focus groups, one of our favorite focus groups, the students I ever had is, I had a seventh grader raise their hand one time and said, you know, could we teach technology to the teachers? Which I thought was pretty cool. They know what they're doing. So we get the, the students, we have the, the community leader focus group, and we also took surveys, which have been doing over the past couple of years, to put that together as well. So we got an awful lot of terrific data. A strategic plan should have two big pieces. The one, it genuinely has to be the data and the input from your community. We've achieved that. We've collectively talked to an awful lot of people, gotten a lot of information. The next piece is it has to be actionable. Who is doing what, when, in a time-bound way, and is it measurable? And that's what we're building towards right now. So we've taken all that information, and at this point, we've built seven goal areas, and there are twenty-four objectives. The way this breaks down a goal area is a large thing we want to do, and objective is a specific thing we're gonna do over the next three years to achieve that goal. And the piece we're at right now, uh, the goals and the objectives have been presented, and we've actually been working now with your senior staff to develop action steps. So your goals, an objective, when are we, you know, what are we gonna do? And an action step, who is doing what, when, to achieve that goal? You have ten thousand things to do. A big piece of this is we can prioritize. Uh, many hands make light work. Everybody has a small piece of this, and we drive it forward together. That's the idea. So that's where we are right now. We're kind of coming down the home stretch. Dr. Gagan, I'm not sure if you wanted to speak at all about just how your, uh, the senior leadership are beginning to build those action steps?
I think an example, and I just saw Pete walk in, and I know that Liz was in it, and, and she's on microphone, so it'd be a good one, is an example of that would be the technology committee that met, I think it was last week. Was it our last Thursday? Um, and they're in the process of building their action steps. There are some actions that we are taking right away. Because we know when it comes to ordering, um, uh, and doing some things that in order to be ready for next year, we need to do it now. So even though we're still working on parts uh, of the strategic plan to put it together as a full package, one of the things we knew we wanted to do was a one-to-one initiative. And um, that's something that I think uh, your guys' team met about, talked about. Do you want to share the experience a little bit, Liz?
Sure. Um, it was really, honestly, I was kind of surprised when uh, Dr. Zachary reached out and asked for me to be on the committee. Um, and I, it was myself and Laura Latham were the parents on the committee. And then it was staff from across the school district, uh, from administrators to teachers, and really just a great uh, conversation. And the overwhelming comment was every single staff member in, in, they, the staff, I should clarify, did send out surveys to the staff within their buildings, um, asking about devices, and every single teacher wants to keep um, basically a one-to-one with devices in the building. What it looks like is a little different based off of ages of the students and the grades that they're gonna be in. Um, and you know, just to reassure people, the, the idea of having individual devices, one-to-one devices with students, it's not to keep it looking like this year in any stretch of the imagination, but rather find more of a balance. And they all um, pretty much felt like, over the last year and a half, they have grown leaps and bounds with technology, and they want to be able to continue that great work. They do want to not necessarily be streaming live classes and have students at home, in finding that healthy balance, but they feel like if they go back to the way it was, bef, you know, before March of twenty twenty, that would really be taking multiple steps backward and be, you know, not necessarily in the best decision for students.
Cool. Thank you. Um, so those, that's the type of experience that's happening. We're building those teams, and we're gonna attack each of those uh, objective goals and objectives, and uh, be able to build action steps off those. We want to have that, you know, we're hoping to have more of it done by today, but it's not. And, and I think we didn't want to rush it, to rush it, and just put something together to try and meet a May twenty-fourth deadline, but to actually have authentic conversations so that we build a strategic plan that we can actually enact. So we're, we're excited about where it's going. We're excited about where it is. Uh, Tom and his team have done a really good job engaging. One of the things I really enjoyed is, you know, the fact, and it was, at first it was um, surprising when uh, they went to set up these um, focus groups. And we're typically involved, and I know even in conversation with the board, because I was like, yeah, we can split it up, and you could do this focus group, you could do that one. And then I talked to Tom, and he's like, we don't want any of you there. And then, you know, but it made a lot of sense because, you know, you do want people to be able to speak freely and speak openly. So if you have a group of students, and you're asking the students how the, the teachers can improve, if the teachers are on the call, you may, you may get a different answer than they're off the call. And the same thing if you're talking to teachers and saying, how could we improve in administration? You may get a different answer than if, if administrators are in or out of the room. And, and they've been very respectful of that process. And so people know who participated in focus groups is we received themes. We received like general information saying that, you know, this is a concern, this is a concern. It wasn't in this group, they said this, in this group, they said that. It was broken up by academics and finance and, and these type of things. So there, it, you, your team has done a really nice job being respectful of all the, the folks. Kudos to the school district for that. That's, that's allowing yourself to be vulnerable. Sometimes that's scary, but to have just the ability to, to have that input. We had some really, really fantastic constructive input across the board. So it's, it's been a fantastic process. So coming down the final stretch, uh, we'll keep you all informed as we build out those action steps. The final piece then, we're gonna be, put together a graphic design of that. And then the final, final piece will be for you to communicate to the community, uh, the goals, objectives, and action steps. And then we want to report out to the community that we've done what we said we were gonna do. So that, that's the next process. Uh, but any questions from the board as to where we are, where we're going?
May I ask, that communication to the community, what, what would that look like, an example?
All, all we want to do is when the, the plan is, is created, will that, that'll just be available for the community. And the larger milestones or benchmarks, we're gonna want to make sure that people are aware of those. And then when we hit those milestones, we're going to want the community to be aware that we said we were gonna do A, B, and C at this particular time. We've just done A, B, and C, so they can see um, the progress.
Is that a sophisticated, well-produced, uh, say, video where there's a grand, uh, say, showing, uh, but always available to the community for viewing?
If we do it, it'd be a sophisticated, well-produced piece. Yes, sure. Yeah, absolutely. And how, and however we do it, uh, we want to make sure that, I mean, these strategic plans can be really, really complex. What we want to do is break it down into some of the larger areas that, that we can put out to the community so they know that we have indeed got them. So once again, large milestones, have we gotten it? And then of course, it's, it's public record, if anybody wants to understand that the specific pieces, they're welcome to see those. Thanks.
I just want to thank you for the help with the strategic plan and, and guidance. Obviously, uh, the strategic plan is our focal point. It's what drives everything that we do in the district. And we appreciate all of those who got an input and helped put this together. And it's a, it's a living document that gets updated and changed as we move forward in time. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And thank you to the administration and all of the school personnel we've worked with. It's, uh, it takes a lot of people to make this go, so thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Gagan.
Dr. Stoll, um, I, I thought tonight would be a, a good opportunity to um, uh, talk a little bit about um, the Dover campus. Um, however, just uh, prior to me talking about uh, my report, I just want to take a second and, and share uh, with the Sadowski family that um, we are with you. Um, you're part of our Westlake family, and, and our thoughts and prayers are with you in this time. So um, please know that we're thinking about you. Getting into, uh, we, we heard tonight folks talking about the Dover campus. And um, a lot of what they said is correct. It was, it's, we spent time uh, nose to nose. We had overflow going on Bassett Road in both directions. We had overflow going on to uh, Glenmore as well. Um, it has been a high point of frustration um, for uh, the parents who are dropping students off at uh, the Dover campus and uh, the residents around there as well, and even people traveling on that road. And that is something, when we've looked at that Dover campus and the raising of Dover Elementary School, that's something we have spent a lot of time talking about. We put together multiple plans uh, to, to try and resolve, or at least move forward with a better plan in place for um, for limiting the traffic there. Now, we had a little bit of a benefit with Dover Elementary School coming offline. Now, the times were staggered, so we, you know, we, we did have, um, uh, but, but it did uh, contribute to uh, staff track, traffic, as well as different congestion that we had there. And we have been looking at this. We've worked with our school resource officers. Uh, we've engaged, you know, architects, not only ones that we've worked with, but even in the community, and, and really tried to find some, some plans. And one, one thing that we've been going back to, and, and it was mentioned tonight, the concept of the elementary school. And we did design the elementary school parking. And we had a couple of things as we went through that. There were a couple of key points that we've been advised through the years that impact the traffic um, car flow on campuses. And if you look at the elementary school, we have our cars coming in um, in one entrance, and we have our buses coming in off another entrance. And it's that separation of the car and bus and, and to limit that co-mangling. Um, the second one is a, a large queuing lane. And that's being able to bring as many cars off of uh, I, any road that we were gonna have. So the cars coming off of any road, uh, and bring them onto our campus would limit the amount of overflow we would have onto our roads. Um, when you look at the Dover campus, the largest queuing lane that we have is on um, uh, the Bassett side. And so we have a very long driveway in order to uh, bring in uh, the vehicles. Um, what we found and what they were correct with is it wasn't long enough. And we had um, uh, backup that was significant on, to that road. And so one of the ideas that we have been talking about, and uh, Mr. Hopkins, can you go in the folder that I, that I shared with you? And I think it's called, let me find the name of it. I would click on it, but I don't have control of what's on the screen. It only shows on my screen.
I have LBMSQ Campus Line or Bassett.
Do LBMSQ, please. So as we, am I gonna be able to see it up there too? Yep. Okay, nice. Okay, good. So as we look at it, and if you look to the right, you have uh, so in the very center is Lee Bernison Middle School. To the top is Dover Intermediate School. And uh, it says local church, but I don't, that's Google Maps put it down there, and there's, there's not one there. But to the right, you have Dover Center Road. And you can see the, the spacing that we have in the front of the campus. And that was always something, even as we looked at those other designs, um, there, there wasn't a lot of spacing in the front for us to queue people up. And so we would have more um, on the road. And even as we looked at those designs from architects, um, there was a lot of the serpentine where people would be circling around, kind of like a Cedar Point ride. You know, as you just keep going around and around, because when you're trying to take a smaller space and, and to be able to bring more cars on. And um, and then to the right uh, uh, of that parking lot on the front is a de-entension or retention. I always get those mixed up. What is that, Dave?
Bedtime.
What is it? Retention. So we have our retention basin over there, so it does make it more challenging to uh, be able to pave over that. Um, we would have to then move it to, to become underground or, or, or make some adjustments to that retention area. So it is uh, more challenging up there. So we have been using um, the, the long driveway coming off of, of uh, Bassett. And then one of our ideas, which we looked at today, or not today, but we, we actually talked about uh, putting in and, and running a pilot, was we've been looking at the fact that when, if we extended the queuing, because the two things that we want to do is, is to extend queuing as much as we can and to keep the buses and cars separate, um, you'll see that we had up front, um, in the past, uh, actually, the, the front, this, would that be um, the south corner uh, of Lee Bernison? There's a bus turnaround. And when we had um, both cars and buses up front, the bus turnaround uh, was used by the buses in order to come through and then turn around and go back out. But now that they line up, the buses do not use that turnaround anymore. So we are taking that turnaround and, and creating more queuing. And one of the things that we, we found was that um, let me see, uh, the, the queuing lane coming off of Bassett was pulling off about seventy-seven to eighty cars. And by utilizing this turnaround here, this bus turnaround, it would bring out uh, another, about another fifty cars. Um, so we wanted to pilot that to see if uh, it would have any impact on um, whether or not cars are being backed up onto Bassett Road. So we did look at that, and we, we did run a pilot of that today. We were planning actually to do it, we were talking about the Tuesday after Memorial Day. But as we met with our SROs this morning, our school resource officers, um, one of them had mentioned that, you know, it's really just, I mean, the, the, the drop-off's the same, the pickup, pickup's the same, none of that changes. All of that still happens in the. All of that still happens in the back of Lee Burnison or to the side by the stadium. And really, all we're doing is just extending that area. Why don't we just try it? And so we did it, you know, we tried it today and ran that pilot to see how it would work. And if you can click on the campus line. So our resource officers, what they do is they do a nice job helping us not only make our plans, but monitor our plans. And so they do have the drones, and they do have a video. But, you know, when they do a video, and I can show the board if you choose, that's fine. But when they do the video, they do have to have that proof to make sure that it's not catching anything that they shouldn't be catching on their drone video. So I did ask if I can share some of it, and so the still shots for the ones, they don't want me to just playing the video because they really haven't had a chance to look at it, because it's just happened today. So this is a very safe shot. And what you're seeing here is in the, on the right side, so in the bottom part of your screen, you see cars exiting. So those cars are traveling where they have the larger space between them. Those cars are traveling to Bassett. And when you look at the cars stacked up, the black car is the last one in line here. And this is at 1:05. Okay, now what we have on the Dover campus is we actually, we dismiss at 1 o'clock, and we have parents showing up at 12:25 to stack up and wait. So people will sit for a half an hour, waiting for students to be let out, which really stacks us up. And that was something, so when you hear the residents talking about that, the fact that people are blocking driveways and there's those issues, a lot of that, you know, and I think someone even mentioned 12:45, like mentioned at 12:45, this sort of thing. And that's people waiting. So they're going to be sitting there waiting for a long period of time, because we're not letting students out until 1 o'clock. And so that is a time where if there's a person, you know, out in front of your driveway, they're going to be sitting there at least 15 minutes, because we're not dismissing until 1 o'clock. So this is at 1:05. And as we watched it today, we didn't see any of our cars back up to Bassett. I don't know, a couple of people here, I mean, I don't know if you guys saw any. We didn't see any of the cars back up to Bassett. So we didn't, we shouldn't have had any of the blocking and the different type of issues that were brought up. Yes.
I mentioned having a conversation with Officer Green today as well. I asked Officer Green, what was it like today? He said, I had nothing to do. There were no automobiles out on Bassett, so it made for a relatively easy day. Although we certainly hope the young lady who was involved in an accident.
Absolutely.
But was that accident, so that accident was not due to the traffic with the cars on Bassett?
Well, here's the thing, and I'll, I won't speak, because we don't know all the information. It was something to where we only know minimal part of the report, because we haven't heard the police report or anything. So I don't want to speak like I have any deep knowledge of it.
Right, but the cars weren't lined up.
Well, and that's what I'll mention, and I'll show you in the next picture, if you want to click to the next one, Todd. So, and I'm looking at Bassett Road. And so one of the things, and I'll actually take both of your points. And if you can zoom in on Bassett Road. And so actually, if you go back, I'm sorry, Todd, if you go back to that last picture, you can kind of, even though this isn't a video, you can see the progression. You can see if you're, are you back to the other picture? Okay. You see right at the curve, there's a black car, and then there's a silver car with a sunroof behind it. So if you hover over that, Todd, it's, there's, you see to the right, there's that black car and silver car behind it. So these folks are traveling out, and the question is, well, what's it like when they get to Bassett? You know, is it going to be stacked up in that way? And here's what we saw today. So if you go to the next one now, you'll see that black car and the silver car behind it. And when you look at the road and the amount of traffic that we have there, I also spoke with Officer Green today as well, and because Mr. Kraft shared that conversation with me. And I said, well, what does it mean you didn't have anything to do? And he said, I only had to stop traffic twice to let people out. And I said, how does that compare to what we were doing before? And he said, it was constant before. I was, you know, standing there directing traffic the entire time. This time, it was only a couple of times that he had to get involved. He said, so I went from like half an hour to five minutes, you know, type of thing. And we had, from our dismissal, today, we dismissed students at 1 o'clock, and by 1:18, the campus was empty. So it was about an 18-minute dismissal today. It really worked pretty well in this regard. And to your point, Mrs. Lysinski, is, you know, from the information that we saw, Bassett wasn't clogged up. I mean, we didn't have the stacking like we had before, where people were at a dead stop in front of people's homes. And actually, you would have, we would have cars that would have been backed up that side street there. I think that's Glennmore right there. And so they would back up to there, and they would be lined up along the ways. Now, with pulling the stack off, one of the things this did, and the reason why Officer Green had less to do today, is because when you have cars coming from both ways to come in, he has more to contend with. So he's standing in there, and he's navigating, you know, cars coming in from this way, cars coming in from that way, and cars leaving, and he's sitting there trying to direct it. So by removing that stack off of Bassett, he didn't have as much to do. And so that's pretty much what happened today. So it wasn't, you know, we didn't have, like I said, cars bumper to bumper on Bassett, and vehicles pulling around and through and next to people. It was, it was pretty smooth, and we're going to run it again. We're going to continue to run it and pilot it and see if this is close. You know, is this something where we have a queuing situation that works on our campus, and we make improvements to it? The concern with, I agree, I think in the ideal world, I think Dover, and we've talked about this before in board meetings, and you can go back and look at them, is that Dover is the most natural entrance, because you have the stoplight, you have the sign, you know, you have the front of the building, and people would typically drive to the front of the building. The issues that we have there is that Dover traffic light, the one coming off our campus and pulling onto Dover Center has been notoriously short. Because all of our, all of our lights in the city of Westlake are designed to keep traffic off Hilliard Center Ridge, you know, main arteries as we go through. So our campus light goes very quickly. You know, on Bassett, we do have a stop sign to where, you know, you can, you don't have to wait for a light to change or to do something like that as well. The other issue we have is the amount of space we have. One of the big issues in the front of the building was when you had the two drop-offs as you would go to Dover Intermediate School, it was a very quick turn. And then if, as people stack up at Dover Intermediate School, they then stretch down to Hilliard. And so it's something to where they're definitely, it's definitely a natural entrance, but we would be recreating that serpentine shape that we would have in the front of Dover Intermediate School. I'm sorry, in front of the, by the Dover entrance. So that's what we worked on today. And, you know, for one day, you know, we saw that we didn't get much past that curve, and we didn't have any backup going on to Bassett. And, you know, morning, we'll run through. And another thing that they did on the Dover Campus and Lee Burnison, as well as Dover Intermediate School, is that stack up in the afternoon, the dismissal time is set. You know, the school day ends right now at 1 o'clock. So people are going to stack up and wait. But they've extended in the morning, the drop-off times. The drop-off time now is parents can start dropping off at 7:15. So, and what was it before? 7:35? Yeah. So before, the folks had to wait, so then you'd have that stack-up situation again, where if you get in at 7:15 or 7:20, you're going to sit there for 15 minutes until 7:35 to let your student out. So they did staff both cafeterias, so that as early as 7:15, when people pull up, kids can get let out and try and keep that flow going as much as we can. So that's what we were able to pilot today. And, you know, it did, we found today that it resulted in not having that stack up on Bassett Road. And as you're seeing here, it also lessened the load on the auxiliary officer directing traffic to where, instead of being constantly in motion trying to manage all the cars around them, he said he only had to, you know, work at it two times today. So that's, we're optimistic about that, but we're obviously going to monitor it as well. So I'll pause.
So is the speaker that talked about the roundabout, is your bus turnaround what she was referring to?
No, I think what she was referring to was, we came back with, we had four or five drawings that we went through and trying to figure out a way to create more queuing off of Dover Center. So I think she was referring, because we would talk about it publicly like we are right now. And so the conversations were around different ways in which we can create that. With, and someone even mentioned with Dover Elementary coming down, you know, we looked at, you know, having another entrance going, exiting out there, which, you know, I'm not quite sure what the final plan is. I know Dr. Stoll mentioned, you know, having a short term and a final. I don't know if we're on our way to the final, if we would utilize Dover Center to extend, you know, the turnaround in any way. So I don't know what the final would be. But what we want to do is watch this and see, you know, are we consistently seeing clear exits out? Because our concern going out of Bassett has been the left-hand turn. And so, you know, but with the cars not stacked up, we're not seeing as much now. Will we see it in the morning, when people are showing up at a similar time tomorrow? That's something we're going to watch.
Do you have a, like a backup plan? So taking it alongside Burnison, using the bus turnaround, coming back in the queue, you were able to, you said 50/50 to cars?
Fifty, about 40, 48 to 50.
So that's what was lined up on Bassett Road is about?
I think it was, I think it was, I would assume it's going to be less, because by doing that, we didn't, it didn't stretch all the way to Bassett. We didn't reach around the corner.
In the event that it would next year, because some of the kids are probably still virtual?
But I think, but I agree with what the person said, where I think it's going to balance out. And that's one of the things we've talked about internally as well. I can't remember which speaker said it. But we do have, right now, Amanda, are you on your computer? How many virtual students do I have at the Lee Burnison, I'm at Dover Campus right now?
Right now, you have 42 at Dover Intermediate and 73 at Burnison.
Okay. Yeah, so you have, you still have some students who are virtual. And I do think that those things will balance out. Where you are going to, we are going to have people who are less comfortable taking buses right now, being in COVID. And I think another point that one of the speakers brought up is you have people working from home. Well, we have parents working from home. As they return to work, they may not be available to drive their kid to school. So, you know, we think that the level that we have right now, I agree with the person who spoke and said that it's probably going to be similar next year. So I don't think we're going to see a lot more, and I don't think we're going to see a lot less. So I think this will probably be a good rounder as we close the year.
Dr. Goggin, what's the difference in bus ridership right now versus on Dover Campus versus in previous years?
We don't know. That's it. I'm looking at Dave, and he doesn't have that exact data.
Any anecdotal? Any anecdotal? I mean, I mean, I mean.
We will reach out to Mr. House, our transportation director, and get that information.
I mean, are we running the same amount of buses that we ran, say, this time last year?
We're running the same number of buses. Well, but that's just it then. If we're running the same number of buses, and there's fewer kids on it because of the spacing.
It's an equipment issue. It's not a catch.
Right.
The other question I have is regarding staffing. It sounds like because of the extended drop-off period in the morning, it seems to be working out even better, or working out where it's not the problems that we've previously had. So it's, this loop is going to happen, utilizing the bus roundabout, it's going to be for pickup. Is staffing going to be outside to help direct?
Yes.
Okay, because I could just see a parent arriving 45 minutes early and, you know, not going down the loop. And next thing you know, you've got everybody doing it wrong, you know, to use the Mr. Mom analogy in that movie.
Yep. It was, you know, there, you know, people were overall, like a lot of people, oh, I get it. You know, and they just kind of looped around. And because when you start to send them to the front of the building, they're like, whoa, wait a minute, I have to go back here. And it's like, yeah, just follow. But once we had that original line set up, and everybody saw where to go, it just became just that, that train.
Well, just a comment. The underlying theme from our speakers today was they were told no car traffic in there. Now, I'm not sure I agree 100% with that, only because there's been traffic going in and out of there for the last, um, 17 years, seven, eight years, as whenever that road ended, which was, I think, probably eight years ago. So, but in the last, since I've been on board seven years, let's say, no one has ever come in, especially that many, and complained about traffic on Bassett. So the theme that I heard was, there's too many cars. No one ever complained before that there were cars. There's too many cars. And which goes back to one of my earlier conversations, when we were discussing a lot of our ideas from the front, is the cars and the buses, I know, don't want to mix, I understand that. But they've been mixing for the last eight years. And as far as I know, there's never been a child hit, as far as I know, and/or any major traffic, traffic accident with buses and cars. Everyone's driving slow, slow to the wind, slow to come out. I'm not sure why we're not just going back to what we did two years ago, pre-COVID. Go back to pre-COVID. Cars went in the back, cars went in the front, buses in the cars, they co-exist. And I'm not sure why we're not going that way. You guys drive a ton. They do not want cars, even if we could queue 300 cars, they do not want that traffic on that road. And especially the items that they brought up. Limited crosswalks, no signage for schools. I mean, all the things that you would see on Dover Center, they're not there. There is a nice little flashing thing, the slope, this reminds you to slow down.
I disagree with John. I cannot, as somebody who has driven down, managed the Dover Intermediate drop-off for a couple of years, that was an accident waiting to happen, you have parents dropping off on Dover Center Road itself. My child was almost hit twice by parents. And the only reason the one time didn't end up with an actual hitting was me laying on my horn. A parent started driving without even looking where they were going. It's historically been, and I can't even tell you how many PTA meetings I've walked into, whether it's a Dover Intermediate PTA meeting or a council PTA meeting. And quite literally, the parents all look at everybody and every single administrator and said, what is going on at Dover Campus, because this is a hot mess. And it's a giant game of chicken with cars and buses, because everybody trying to get out of there. We cannot go back to what it was two years ago, because that did not work. I'm not saying that what right now is going on is perfect. We do definitely need to take into consideration car, students on bikes and walkers. But separating those buses and the cars is making things better, and fundamentally, two years ago, didn't work.
Well, and I can appreciate your feedback there. But again, I know Dave wasn't here before, Mr. Puffer. But again, we had no problems. There were no accidents. But again, we had no problems. There were no accidents. I mean, I could, I could give you a couple of different examples as to what might happen, what could happen. It looks like it's going to happen, but it hasn't happened. That's the thing. A lot of thought and, and time went into designing that whole campus from people that we weren't, that none of us were even here as part of that. It wasn't just, you know, Dr. Keenan saying, yeah, let's just do this. The city was involved, designers were, architecture involved. All of that flow was designed, even taking into consideration Dover Elementary, which as Dr. Goggins said, that's, that's been removed from the equation. Now, honestly, what probably should happen is there should be a queuing lane on Dover Center. And that, but that's a city issue. We should not be using the back entrances queue that many cars back there. I, I'll tell you what, I'd be, I'd be up here too if I lived on Bassett, if I had to experience that. And I know the parents and they are spirited at times. Um, when they get into the, uh, the cars, almost road rage. Because again, they're hurrying to drop their kid off to go to work. Or they're hurrying to pick up Jimmy because he's got to go to a, a Saks of Homeless. He's got to go to a doctor's appointment, things like that. And there's just a lot of just insecure drivers.
I um, I, I want to say thank you to uh the neighbors uh that took the time to chat with me Thursday, Friday, and also that came out tonight, Libby, Eric, Vito, Katie, Joan, um, and to, to say thank you for your patience. I know it was mentioned tonight, it seems like um our, our words fell on deaf ears and to know that they weren't, they didn't fall on deaf ears. I know a question tonight I received in the hallway was, you know, you know, you, you, you engage pretty quickly here. And I, I like to believe chatting with Dr. Goggins the last couple of days and sharing with him words that he has heard before. Uh, but just really a plea from the neighbors on Bassett saying, we know you're going to work on this over the summer, but can't you do anything now? So I do want those neighbors to know, we, we heard that, and if there was something that can happen, uh, Dr. Goggins and administrators and staff really worked to, to provide some kind of relief. So I say thank you for that. Um, and, and we are going to work on this and it will be resolved prior to next school year. I do want to say thank you to, to the Westlake Police Department and specifically Officer Grain for monitoring that situation. And um, to uh comment on what Mr. Fanukin has to say that, you know, when we meet next time, let's, let's put it all on the table. Should we come in uh next meeting and should we go through that idea of come in off of Dover or not? And why not? And, and we should all have those answers. You know, why should we do it? Why should we not?
Well, I, I guess that would be, because I know we've talked about it. And then obviously I was a pretty strong advocate as to going back to the way it was. And, and I, and I guess that would be the question is to, obviously it was decided not to. What was the reasons that we used to not do it? And why couldn't we do it for the rest of the year?
I, I, I think the ideas, uh, again, why we chose those, we, we discussed that as, as a board and, and we wanted to give it a try, uh, as, as far as traffic is concerned, which I think is what you're talking about. I think part of this that we need to build in the conversation that we'll talk more about next meeting is we need crosswalks painted and similar to what we have at the rec center. Surrounded by white lines, a big green in the middle, something uh that, that is very visible. Uh, not just um on property, touching our property, but also on North Glen and Glenmore as well.
Again, that's more of a city.
Excuse me, Mr. Kraft, we also need crossing guards, and I know that's a partnership with the city.
That's a city issue too.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, thank you for finishing that sentence for me. Um, we, we also need signs. One thing that the residents asked for uh included signs on property, uh, and that does involve, of course, a conversation with the city. Um, I would like to reach out to our councilman for uh the ward, that being Councilman O'Donnell have conversations. But really to pursue this as, as quickly as we can and start working on resolutions at the next week.
Are there any cars today that come in off of Dover Center at all?
Yes, there are.
Obviously it's limited.
Very limited, yeah, visitors.
Oh, not pickup?
No, we're not doing.
Also, so if someone pulls up and they cannot pick up their child.
They're dismissed.
Well, that's a good way to make sure that they go with that.
So um, what I would say is I like what uh Mr. Kraft is saying and we can, this will be an agenda item. And um, we also have tried something different for one day. You know, we've tried for, for years, um, the, the route you were going and the, the backup onto Dover was very significant and, and we would get complaints about that as well.
City issue. I don't mean interrupt, but it's a city issue. We, we.
I understand, but, but it's one that, you know, so let's see how this works. We have um, until our next, you know, we have a couple of weeks left in school. Um, what if this works well? You know, let's watch to see how uh this particular design works. It's different than the original one. It's different than the one we've been running. And um, let's monitor and see instead of just saying, well, now we're just going to switch back.
Oh, okay. I, I, I agree. Trying something different. Uh, but again, the underlying theme was they were promised that vehicular traffic would not be there.
Well, that, that, now, I, I, I have to.
I don't believe it either.
But here's the thing. That, that's, that part I agree with because I went back and, and I was told that too. And I, and I have to go back through because I, I searched every file we have to find old PowerPoints, you know, conversations, letters, and, and I can tell you that, um, I think it was Mr. Wilson who shared with me, you know, the very first year they were open, their traffic pattern. And it was the pattern that, you know, where you had, um, Amanda, who came in off the back? Was that Lee Burn, what Lee Bernison, uh, you would have come in and off Bassett?
Bernison. Yeah, I think people kind of mixed. It was supposed to be this in the back and Bernison in the front.
Okay. So we had that where, um, so that has from the, the very earliest, the very earliest traffic pattern that's been shared with parents has always had. Um, the cars coming in off of Bassett. Um, and, and then I'd even, you know, had things, you know, brought up to where.
What, what was it?
Um, would have cars break, brought it coming off Bassett.
The original plan?
Original plan. Had cars coming in off Bassett.
All cars coming in?
Not all.
Okay.
But it had car travel.
Yes, yes, yes.
On Bassett and, and we were supposed to, now what we were told, and Dave might know this a little bit more than me, was that buses were the things that were relegated to the front. And, and so buses were relegated to the front. And one of the things pointed back is like, well, look at the, the sign on Bassett that has a truck limit. You know, so you can't bring, you know, thirty buses back here because there's a limit uh to this. So it only should happen on special occasions or uh soccer games or, or different type of things like that. So the information we received and, and, you know, uh, were the agreements where that we were supposed to limit the buses um going to the back and um, um, and then have residential come in. Um, but the earliest designs that, that we have seen and I've been able to track down that were communicated with parents on drop-offs, and I, I can't remember if it was two thousand eleven or when, when it was. But um, the earliest ones I could find had uh, uh, car, residential cars coming in off of Bassett. All of the buses up front.
Well, and, and.
And front and, and on Dover too, correct.
And right.
Correct. Yeah, but I did not see anything where it was promised where only buses were going to come to the back.
No, no, I don't know.
I mean, because that, I, I, I couldn't find that. I'm not seeing that anybody.
It's never been in practice. And so for the last eight years, that's how it's been. And there hasn't been any issues.
Yeah.
And I think there was a statement saying that when school was closed, uh, you, you know, that gate would go across and then the, the gate broke, but that was back. I think there's more uh athletic teams that have practices now at different hours of the day. So you really can't shut off those gates.
They try, and we try and monitor that because that is something we even looked at with, when it comes to that gate.
It's more of the actually two inside.
Because we don't want that turnaround.
I remember one complaint several years ago and they were either doing uh construction work on Dover or someplace. And we had complaints that people were bypassing the traffic and using that as the cut through. And so then you did, the gates were closed, so people couldn't cut through. Yeah. But uh, so it's a mess.
Okay. So that's my report.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, and, and you did make one statement that um about the traffic light being very short at Dover. It's very long at the high school. It's very hard to make a left-hand turn.
No, I'm saying in some ways it is hard to get out because it's.
Right, I know it's quick.
As soon as, as soon as you, uh, and, and we have every single, every single um advisory council meeting we have, it was an agenda item. To where it's like, can we do anything about the Dover light? Can we do anything about the Dover light? And then it just added to more stack up on the campus and then pushing off onto Dover Center. So it is, and.
Order con.
President Store.
Okay, uh, next up is the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Stoll. Uh, I know it's been a, a long evening uh already, but I, I would ask that you bear with me. Uh, although we give financial updates to the Board of Education on a regular basis, uh, twice per year, we are required under Ohio law uh to uh have the Board of Education approve a five-year forecast. That forecast then needs to be submitted to ODE and it's reviewed for uh legal purposes in determinations of school districts and their financial sustainability. Tonight I'd like to present our May five-year forecast update uh to the Board of Education for your consideration. Uh, I'll try to go through it uh relatively quickly, but I know I do want to spend some time on it. It's an important factor as we look to make decisions for the financial outlook of the district. And uh, we want to make sure that the Board of Education has all of the information as well as being transparent with our community. The information that's on the screen I know can uh, it appears small and it's very detailed. I do include all of the information um in board docs. If you either go to the Treasurer's Report, you'll see this uh PowerPoint presentation in PDF format. Or if you go to the actual resolution regarding the five-year forecast, you'll be able to see my forecast in a couple of different formats as well as uh my assumptions. Um, to be honest with you, uh, looking at the forecast, you don't get full detail without going through the assumptions. And I will say, if you do have trouble sleeping at night, the assumptions will help you fall asleep. It is very long and detailed. Uh, it is about thirty pages long. Uh, so um, it will help you fall asleep, but uh it is detailed information. And again, our goal is to be, my goal as Treasurer of the District is to be as transparent as possible, not only with the Board of Education, but with the community as a whole. So in front of you is the updated forecast. Um, we'll go through some of the areas um that are most relevant here. Um, first and foremost is our revenue. Um, when we look at our line one point zero one zero, general, uh, general property, the vast majority of our revenue comes through local property taxes. As you can see, uh, with the exception of uh fiscal year nineteen, we've been right around that forty-two and a half million dollars throughout the past three years. What I believe happened in tw- at the end of twenty seventeen, there were changes to the tax laws. We had a number of people who prepaid their taxes. Um, and that kind of hit us in, uh, actually coming in, in fiscal nineteen. Uh, but we're also seeing a little bit more revenue than I expected in uh twenty twenty-one here at forty-two and a half. Uh, I think we're ultimately, we'll find out at the end of the calendar year, but I think we're seeing some of the new construction hit our tax duplicate. As noted in my assumptions, I do not count uh, uh, new construction until it actually hits our tax duplicate. We don't necessarily want to speculate on what's happening in the community, how long it will take to build, when it actually will come online. So I am, I, I do take a conservative approach and I would rather be low on my revenue uh estimations uh than to project them with a growth rate and then not hit those. Uh, you will see in the forecast in the four years after this year, we are in fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, each year, our fiscal years end on June thirtieth. So uh, when we're in June, if June thirtieth is in year twenty twenty-one, calendar year twenty twenty-one, that's our fiscal year twenty-one and so on for each of the four years going forward. Um, you'll see that really I have, I'm using the numbers from the county that they certify and going at about ninety-nine percent of the certified values of uh the county. That's why we're seeing a little dip going into next year. Um, and then it kind of levels back out as I show a very, very anemic uh, uh, growth rate of about a half a percent. Um, this only includes revenues that are collected through property tax. Uh, we do have our current uh collection rate. We're right in between ninety-six, ninety-seven percent uh as our collection rate. Uh, if we were to collect a hundred percent of taxes, we would be at uh forty-seven point seven million dollars. Uh, we do get um, uh, four point four of that, of that forty-seven point seven comes in through the state through a reimbursement called the Homestead Rollback or Homestead Exemption. Owner, uh, residential properties in the community for older levies um receive a ten percent discount uh that the state pays the tax in your, as, as reimbursement for you directly in the school district. So you see a reduction and we get it from the state. Uh, we also get um an additional two and a half percent for residential properties that are owner occupied as a primary home. Um, I do hold the collection rate constant throughout the forecast. That the collection rate fluctuates each and every year. We've been fortunate that we're right in that uh ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven percent. Um, you know, so I'm comfortable with uh carrying it forward. Uh, and like I said, uh, we do have new construction, but we also see some offset with property value challenges. Um, uh, we have a number of challenges that we fight through an attorney. Um, and we try to protect the valuation of the community as much as possible. We do have some state grants that we received. Um, traditionally in twenty eighteen, fiscal years twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, if you would have asked me what type of district we are according to uh ODE, I would say that we're uh referred to as a guaranteed district. What that meant is the state of Ohio would like to give us less money, but under the law, they are required to give us what we had collected at a certain point in time. I believe they took the snapshot somewhere around twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So we were about three point four million dollars. Unfortunately, that all changed with the pandemic. Uh, initially, they started off by uh dropping us down to uh two million dollars from that three, four to two million. They uh bumped it back up uh late in the uh end of twenty twenty fiscal year uh to about two point seven million dollars. Uh, this is an area where um I was dramatically off uh in our October forecast. Um, in our October forecast, I was forecasting uh two million for twenty twenty-one because the state had not yet passed that same resolution allowing us to at least go back to where we were around that two point eight million. Um, so we're actually going to end the year right around the two point nine is where I'm estimating for this year. Uh, I do have a risk factor uh going forward. Uh, as we sit here on May twenty-fourth, uh, the biennium budget for the state of Ohio is not yet completed. And while there's been discussions about school funding uh going forward in the next biennium, um, the, the budget is due by July first and we don't have information on how it will affect us. I am assuming, and this could be a big assumption, but I am assuming that we will go back to pre-pandemic levels and at a minimum go back to that guaranteed level of three point four million dollars. That is a risk factor going forward, but we'll know more over the next uh six weeks or so as they finalize the budget. Um, additionally, we have a restricted grants and aids. This line item, you'll see fluctuates each other year. Twenty eighteen, I do want to point out uh, there was a delay in the state funding of that, and that's actually two years collections at once. Uh, so it wasn't actually a hundred and fifty-seven. Uh, this is a line item that's included specifically for what's called catastrophic costs. Uh, under our special ed program, uh, we are able to submit to the state of Ohio uh costs for certain qualifying students in the special ed program where their costs exceed a dollar figure set by uh the state of Ohio. So for instance, a student who's a category six autistic, the funding level from the state is somewhere around thirty-six thousand dollars. We don't receive thirty-six thousand dollars from the state. Well, uh, we, again, like I said, we've been a guaranteed district. So whether we had a hundred students who qualified or one, we get the same amount of money. But they say that it should cost about uh thirty-six thousand dollars to educate a category six uh student who happens to have special needs. The reality of it is we have some contracts with um Cleveland Clinic School for Autism, who is, it's the best placement for that student, but the cost that's involved is more in the range of eighty thousand dollars. So we're able to submit the difference between the two for catastrophic cost reimbursement. Now we'll submit about a million dollars worth of costs. Unfortunately, um, because we're viewed as a wealthy district, that get, that amount gets reduced. Uh, so they uh multiply it by our state share index, which we're a five percent state share uh school district. And then furthermore, uh, they don't tell you how much money is in the pot. and they just go ahead and say, okay, all these school districts apply. They then divvy it up to the maximum amount that they've set aside for the pot. We don't know what it is. So every year it changes depending on how much they want to get out that year. A good example is I did go back just for fun and looked at 2019 compared to 2020. We actually submitted greater claims in 2020, but received less money than in 2019. So unfortunately, we are, we do appreciate the fact that we get some, but we don't get nearly as much as I would say we rightfully do, but that's up to the sky. Um. We'll skip down to the next. And we do have other revenue as well. One of the changes I've made here is over the past several forecasts, I've carried about 1.5 million dollars in forecasted revenue from our all other operating revenue. So I'm going to go to that second line there. The top line I had already spoken about, that's that homestead rollback. That's that property tax allocation around 4.4 million. But that second line, what we've seen over the past few years is our all other operating increase. We've seen that in a couple of ways. One, we have been fortunate and I, and I want to give credit to the Board of Education as well. Right before the pandemic hit or right as it's starting to hit, the board allowed me to sign a contract with Dollar Bank to start moving some of our banking services over to Dollar. So as interest rates in the banking industry plummeted down to under 10 basis points, we've been receiving over 1% or 10 times that. Because under the first year of the agreement with Dollar, regardless of what the rates were, they were going to boost us one percentage point over the market rate. So we, we have actually been able to earn some interest on our, on our checking account during the pandemic, which is highly unusual. But we've also been, and I want to be careful in using the word, but aggressive in fighting challenges to property values of mostly our commercial property owners. So what happens often is we will get a challenge to the property value and we will, it gets filed with the county first and then it can go to the state level. We work through an attorney to challenge those challenges or to respond to those challenges. And in a lot of cases, we've been able to come in to what's called payment in lieu of tax agreements. And this is, allows us to protect our revenue while doing essentially an out of court settlement on these properties. Property tax values are reviewed every three years, whether it's through a reappraisal or a triennial update. But we're able to work through these, through the three-year process during those challenges. So we're able to receive those funds to still make the district whole. Additionally, we've received some more revenue through our TIF agreement. I believe the TIF agreement is around a guaranteed minimum of, I want to say 425, it might be 475,000. This year, we, we were taking in about $630,000. So we are seeing an increase in that TIF payment. That is in specific to American Greedings and the Block T development at Crocker Park that the board had entered into with the city. I've moved that now from the 1.5 million where I was saying I moved it to 1.9 million, which is more of a three-year average for the three previous years. We are seeing some more sustained increase in that all other revenue. Again, a risk factor here going forward. We are no longer going to get that same interest income. In fact, I talked to Dollar today, we're going back to market rates in the very near future. And then we also have a risk factor with the payment in lieu of tax agreements. The state of Ohio extended the ability of corporate, or I'm sorry, commercial property to file for tax decreases up through October of this year. Usually it's due, I think in March, they gave them basically a six-month extension of it. There could be valid arguments from hospitality industries for loss of tax value due to the pandemic. And that's something that we'll have to work through. So we may see a decrease in values or certainly we may see a decrease in our pilot agreements as we try to work through those. Next area is as we get into our expenditures. First and foremost, I just have to say over and over and over again, we are a people business. We don't produce widgets. When people say, well, you're spending so much of your money and salary and benefits. Well, this is how we educate students. We hire teachers, we hire administrators, you know, we hire staff to care for our students and educate them. And so as we look through our salaries going forward, the Board of Education did enter into three-year agreements with both our certified and classified staff that have already been agreed to by both parties. So we know that we're under a 2% increase in the raise. They do have steps in there as well, but under 2% on the raise for guaranteed of a two-year contract. This will be your 22 and 23, and then it would be automatically extended into fiscal year 2024. If I can certify that the funds are available. So that's kind of where we are, you know, with that. You know, I feel we're, we're, we're doing well with our salaries. We're right, right where we projected, where we see the decrease, or I'm sorry, the very slight increase from 2019 into 2020 is we saw essentially a decrease because of the retirements or officially the reductions of going into the new elementary school. So as we had a number of staff members in our classified who were on a two-year retire rehire, they didn't come back going into fiscal year 20 as we opened up the new elementary school. We saw a significant savings in, in that aspect. As we have seller, I'm sorry, as we have benefits. This year, I believe I'm going to come in a little high at that 12, three number. Going forward, I carry a 10% increase in our healthcare benefits. Overall, we're about $7 million a year in our healthcare costs. I'm showing a 10% increase year after year. This year, for a point of reference, we were a 0%. But that was due to the pandemic and the lack of use of elective procedures and people not running to the emergency room when somebody had a sore throat. So because people had used telemedicine more, because people were not using the elective procedures, we, we were able to do a 0% increase. I don't, don't forecast it to be a 0% increase. I think 10 is a little high, but I like to build a little cushion in there. I've lived in my career through 12% increases, so I want to make sure I hedge my bet there because it can be an expensive increase fairly quickly. Moving past seller and benefits, we have purchase services. Purchase services is a, you'll see purchase services in the next one, supplies and materials. This has thrown me for a little bit of a loop. Last year, you know, prior to 2020, we were seeing increases each and every year, essentially in our purchase services as some of our costs include substitute teachers, technology licenses and services. This is where we pay the out of district tuition or community school deductions, open enrollment deductions, scholarship deductions, utility bills, legal fees, all kinds of things come out of our purchase services. Last year, we saw a dramatic decrease and it was easy for me to explain. We closed our buildings in March of 2020. We weren't running buses, we weren't, you know, heating or cooling the buildings at the same level, using the electricity. All of those types of things, toilet papers, paper towels, all of those things. It was easy for me to explain. This year, I think we're going to come in a little under that 62, probably more in the 6 to 61 range. And I can't quite explain. I'm going to take some time to try to analyze it a little bit further and I'm not comfortable with dropping it in my forecast going forward yet. So you'll see a jump going into next year. I'm not sure if that will be accurate or not, but I will monitor it closely to see if it's, if it is a long-term shift or if it's a short-term blip. But you will see in our community school deductions and our open, and in our scholarship, we saw increases from last year. Again, would probably make sense in a lot of cases, but our open enrollment did jump slightly from last year. Same idea with supplies and materials. We know that we had a significant decrease last year going from where we were normally around the 1.4 million down to under a million dollars. Again, shutting down the buildings in March and not allowing our staff, our administrators to order anything, our staff to utilize anything that we were purchasing because everyone was at home shows a pretty significant decrease. But this year, it's, I'm, I'm struggling with it as well. I have it at one, two, to be honest with you, as most of all of our purchasers are done. I think it's going to come in more in the million dollar range. I have it hedged a little bit, but you know, we were carrying one, seven. We always built in a cushion and I've carried a cushion for years. You know, I've been using the one, seven number. We've been around the one, four number, but it is a pretty big cushion if we are seeing a long-term shift. And that's something that we'll have to monitor. There is that last line, other objects. Other objects, you know, carry, whether we have memberships or our audit expenses. People often don't understand that we pay the county to collect taxes on our behalf. We can't collect them directly, that's not legal. The county collects them and they then charge their fees to all of the public, a political subdivision. So whether it's a city or, or school and it's done on a percentage based on how much you take in. So we do pay, you know, for collection of the taxes as well as we have some, if we have elections or liability insurance as well. What does this all show? It shows that we have a, we've had a growing fund balance for the past few years. This year, I think we'll see in, in a possible even out, maybe a slight growth this year as we, I had it projected at about 26.8 million. Now I do want to specify, this does not include transfers and advances. We've spoken very forwardly about the need for some transfers. I'm going to ask the board to do at the June 30th board meeting specifically into our cafeteria program and our project link program as the pandemic has devastated both programs and I can't end the fiscal year in the negative. We also do some advances where we have, whether we're waiting on federal funds or state funds. You know, so that may change the actual number itself, but both, both, I'm sorry, transfers we don't, will not get back, but advances we will return when the money's paid to us. As we move forward, I think for our June 14th board meeting, I think it would be good for us to have some open conversations about the finances as well as how it would affect a potential for a levy and the timing of that levy. But I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the forecast at this time, if there are any.
I just want to mention Mr. Hopkins and I met last week and went through this in detail. After that conversation, I spent another couple of hours going through many of the numerous pages and I, I find it to be thorough and I'm in agreement with it. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no questions. I can move into my recommendations if that's okay, Mr. President.
Please do so, Mr. Hopkins.
All right, the first four A I have as a, to approve the five-year forecast, I think we've gone over it in detail enough, but I do need the approval from the Board of formal approval so I can submit it to the state. For B, I have asking for permanent appropriations. This is an increase in our permanent appropriations. I think if I remember off the top of my head, somewhere around $60,000. This is not something that I'm concerned about as we've not decreased our appropriations for funds that have not been used yet. And we'll do that as we go into the end of June for the end of the fiscal year. For C, I have a then and now, one then and now for trash removal. For D, I, I take responsibility for this one. This was a change order that should have been added. I'll go into a little bit of detail. When we went to do the abatement of Dover and Bassett, the board gave me authority to enter into a GMP for $180,000. The initial GMP ended up being 160, so we budgeted 180. The initial GMP ended up being 180. And I saw, I'm sorry, 160 and I signed at the 160 level. They found some abatement or they found some hazardous material that needed to be abated as they started tearing down the building. So you open up the walls, you start finding asbestos on pipe insulation, things of that nature. So it needed some additional abatement and it put us right at about that 180. It ended up being a little over 182, 182,000. So this is not 22,000 plus over what we had budgeted. It's actually only about 26, $2,700 over what we budgeted. But because I already signed once using that authority, I would ask the board to formally approve a change order so that we would still just be over that budget slightly, but it, it's not nearly as bad as it would necessarily look. I do ask on this resolution as I'm reviewing it, I made an error in typing it. It's actually, should allow me not to exceed $23,000. The change order is 22,000, I think 608 and change. And I needed to, if it would be okay with the board, I'd like to amend that before it's moved amended to $23,000. There's two or three changes in the subject in the whereas paragraph and then also in section one. And then the final resolution E is a GMP amendment or allowing me to enter into a GMP amendment to do the demolition of Bassett Elementary School. We have abated it, it is ready for demolition, but we'd like to move forward with the demolition starting as soon as possible here in the next few weeks. But I would need a board approval to move forward. So those are my, all of my, or my five resolutions. I would ask that the board, or you could consider to approve all four, all five of them together. But I would ask that we note that the one would be amended for D would be amended to read 23,000 instead of 22,000.
Do we need to move to do that?
Uh, no, because we haven't had a motion yet on that item. We can make that amendment.
Do I have a motion to discuss? Look at treasurer's recommendations for A through 4E with 4D being amended from $22,000 to $23,000.
So move.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
In regards to Bassett coming down, the plan is then it would come down in June and keep the current playground. That's at Bassett.
Yes, so we're asking that it would start coming down as soon as possible. So we're asking them, I don't have a firm timeline yet, but we can pass that information on as soon as we do. But we're asking that it would be done as soon as possible in our discussions with them. We're hoping to have it at a minimum started in June and fenced off as soon as possible so that we no longer have people getting near the building. And yes, the playground would remain as well as the parking lot.
When the building's fenced off, would that fence off the playground also or would that be separated?
I, I don't believe we're fencing off the playground, that would be separate.
I had a question. What's the status of the, what used to be the, the bus exit out into seller's reserve? Is that gated? Is that gate going to stay closed or is it going to be open?
It's gated and it's closed.
And it's going to stay that way once we tear it down?
That would be the intent.
Okay.
So Mr. Kozovar answered that it is gated and it is currently closed and it is expected to stay closed.
Did did you ever reply to Mrs. Stone about, they were interested in purchasing that the property there, but I believe it's city owned. Remember that email we got about a month or so ago, Jackie Stone.
I don't know if I got it.
I don't recall.
Years ago, she contacted me and said that she and her adjacent neighbor, there's apparently a strip of, of land where, and I don't know if it was used for the kids who were walking. And they were interested in purchasing it and I was told it was owned by the city. And I think that's why she contacted us again because they still like, in other words, they don't want anything. They want to purchase the property so that they can keep it just land. They don't want anything else laying in there, but.
So I think one of the things we've talked about is right now, and, and I don't want to create confusion because this seems to be a hot rumor that starts very frequently is we have no intention of selling these properties. And, and you know, we're looking, when you look at Holly Lane and Bassett, you know, these are not for sale. And I know that's a big concern from people thinking that there's a potential of developers coming in. So our position has been, these are just not for sale, period. You know, it's, it's school property and we're looking to use it for fields and partnerships with the city with potential more fields. So I would probably just, so we don't create any type of confusion or anything out there that people think that they can buy parts of these, you know, the land. At least from I heard in the conversation with the board, this land is not for sale.
Excellent, that's true.
This was a student who has been noticed when he was mowing the grass that there were survey spikes or survey.
We've not done any surveys of our property. Now we had the similar thing at Parkside happen and it ended up being the gas company as they were running a new gas main from Center Ridge to Hilliard. So there are other people who will do surveys or put out survey posts, but it was not initiated by the district in any way.
Okay, so there was nothing of ours going on at that. So did you respond to her about that or should I give, this was for May 1st, so.
I, I thought we responded.
Yeah, I thought that.
Okay.
Respond publicly right now if you wish.
This is Lizinsky, did you say it was a property owned by the city and not the school district?
Well, the, I don't.
There is land there. There is land there.
Yeah, there's a, a little strip of land between two driveways, I think. And, and I was told when I inquired into it for that it was not our land, that it was city land. Um.
There is a, a piece of land between some homes and then where our property ends and it is owned by the city.
Really not a school district issue. It's really a city issue.
It would extend in people's backyards, which probably about four homes.
Oh yeah. You know what? Actually I'm looking back and, um, you had said that, um, you know her from church and you were responding to her.
Well, I responded to her than you'd respond.
Well, then that case.
I had said that I, I would, uh, let you know and, um.
Well, we can contact.
Okay. Or I can just send her off an email now saying that we are doing no surveys in the area, but it could be, and as far as we know, the city isn't.
I don't know, but it could be utility companies, the city, all kinds of pieces, neighbors.
I'll just shoot her off an email.
Hey, any other discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Hopkins.
This is for four A through four E as amended. Uh, Lizinsky?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Hopkins. Uh, next up is superintendent recommendations. Uh, we've got, uh, letters five A through five N. Uh, Dr. Gagin, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is, uh, a couple of really fun items that we have in here. Um, would be, first of all, Gibson donations, fortunately a very long list and, um, going to read off some of these donations. Um, donation of $50, uh, from, uh, Carol Bages, uh, uh, to the class of 1959 Kathleen Laven Memorial Fund. Uh, Bella Capelli Sanctuaryo, uh, donated salon goods valued $208.80 to the class of 2022 at Westlake High School. Heinz Barash donated $50 to the 1959, uh, class of 1959 Kathleen Laven Memorial Scholarship Fund. The class of 1959, Carol Judith Collins also donated, and this was $500 to the class of 1959 Kathleen Laven Memorial Scholarship Fund. Uh, Gary and Judith Collins donated $50 to the same fund for Kathleen Laven. Uh, Deanna Dunbar donated $100 to the same scholarship, uh, for Kathleen Laven. Um, Donna Hadenger, uh, care of Diane McConnell donated $25 to that same fund. Uh, Judith Keim donated $100 to the, uh, Kathleen Laven Scholarship Fund. Paul Lowe donated $100 to that fund. William McKenzie donated $25 to the same fund. Diane McConnell donated $50 to the fund. Uh, Joanne Miller donated $100 to the fund. And just so you know, this is a scholarship that we're hearing that was just started up this year. And I know you sent an email about it and, um, uh, it was, it was one that is not typically in our awards night. So that's why we have some of these coming in now. Uh, Judith Nelson donated $25 to the fund. Joanne Pennfound donated $50 to the fund. Diana Pie donated, uh, gammon percussions drum set valued at $250 to the band department at Lee Burnison Middle School. Howard and Susan Pullman donated $150 to the Kathleen Laven Fund. Charles Slack donated $100 to the same fund. David and Mary Stupar donated $50 to that same fund. Dennis and Bonnie Troyan donated $100 to that fund. Uh, Richard and Joanne Valentine donated $200 to the 1950, class of 1959 Kathleen Laven Memorial Scholarship Fund. Robert and Robin Wagger donated $100 to that fund as well. Um, Westlake Elementary School PTA, care of Lola Winham, uh, donated 300 American plastic scoop rocker chairs to Westlake Elementary School. Actually, uh, Ken Tucker just showed me those the other day. They're very neat.
You have a picture of them?
Um, Anna White donated, donated a snare drum practice pad and carrying case estimated at $350 to the band department at Lee Burnison Middle School. Jane Wood donated $100 to the 1959 Kathleen Laven Memorial Scholarship Fund. Francis Youngless also donated to that fund, uh, $200. Carl Zuber donated $100 to the Kathleen Laven Memorial Scholarship Fund. And finally Doug and Lania Zupan donated $200 for the class of 2022 at Westlake High School. I love it when those lists are long. They take a while to go through, but thank you to everybody for your generosity, um, for our schools and also those memorial funds. Uh, five B is just one of the best ones that we have, uh, uh, every single year. And it's a resolution to accept and approve the Westlake High School graduating class of 2021. Those students are listed in your documents. Letter C is a resolution to approve administrative employment. Bailey, you've been sitting here for two hours and 15 minutes, wondering what on earth is going on. Um, and, and so we do have, uh, Bailey Morries here, uh, with us this evening. She is, uh, up for recommendation as assistant principal at Dover Intermediate School. Uh, Bailey is, uh, coming to us from Warrensville Heights where she has, uh, served as an administrator for six years in many departments, curriculum, instruction, uh, testing. Uh, she, uh, does a lot of data analysis and coaching of, um, principals and teachers for instructional practices. So very, very, uh, strong, energetic, um, uh, leader that we are bringing in. Uh, so, uh, welcome Bailey. Um, five D is a resolution to approve, uh, uh, first year continuing contracts and limited contracts. Letter E is a resolution to approve employment of classified staff members for our extended school year program. Um, and then five F is a resolution to approve employment of licensed staff members for extended York, extended school year program. Uh, we have five G, which is resolution to approve salary in clean increases due to educational changes. Five H is a resolution to approve a licensed substitute. And we have I, a resolution to approve employment of project link personnel. And J is a resolution to approve contracts of purchase services through North Coast Therapy LLC. And letter K, this is a resolution, uh, to approve membership in next year's OHSAA. Um, so we do need to approve that annually to participate in OHSAA and their sanctioned events. Letter L is a resolution to approve ASSE International for placement for foreign exchange students. And the last one is, uh, and it's also nice to see is we are beginning to try and plan some overnights, uh, some trips. And we have two up for consideration by the board. One is an instructional music trip to Orlando, Orlando, Florida next March, uh, of 2022. And, uh, football team camp at Ohio Wesleyan University, which would be this summer, uh, in, in mid-June. Um, those are my recommendations for this evening. Uh, I would ask that we do five and A and five B separately. And if it so pleases the board, five C through five M can be combined.
Okay. Can I have a motion for, uh, superintendent's recommendation five A?
They'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? As always, we thank all of the generous donations and as, uh, Scott said, we like to see those long lists. So, uh, roll call, Mr. Hopkins.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is, uh, superintendent's recommendation five B. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, how many graduates are there? Do you know?
I thought it was tweeting, uh, less than 300, uh, and, uh, upper 200s. I don't know how it was. Do you now, John?
I can count each one of them.
I don't know. Do I vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just making sure.
There's no financial.
All right.
They didn't graduate.
John's willing to risk it.
It's only if they're employed by the school.
That's what I just want to make sure. Don't want to nullify.
I just want to make the comment of congratulations to the class of 2021 and I'm looking forward to participating in a, um, commencement that's not a drive-in theater. So I'm excited.
Any other discussion?
Nachos.
Oh, I plan on bringing a big old bucket of popcorn. I'll just sit there.
Hey, any further discussion? Okay, uh, Mr. Hopkins, roll call.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is, uh, superintendent's recommendations five C through five M. Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Right? Any discussion?
Welcome.
I think that, that echoes all of us. Uh, welcome to the district. Uh, we look forward to working with you. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, Mr. Hopkins, roll call.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is item, uh, board items and the first reading of policies.
So if I can just take a minute and, uh, I did send a spreadsheet of description along with the hard copies of these policies that we have. I would ask you to take time to review them and we'll put them out for the work session. And if we want to go a little bit deeper prior to a vote, we could do that, but these are here for your reviews. So.
And were these, uh, uh, Neola?
They're all Neola. The, the only one that wasn't in a Neola update was the, um, the one that was 5330 use of medications. And this was a request from our nurses, uh, to give them flexibility to be able to. I think it's more of a. So, but other than that, the rest of them are recommended by Neola.
Okay, any other board items or comments at this time?
The, uh, band is going to be marching on Monday, correct?
I believe they are.
And, uh, who will be, uh, joining me, uh, following the band at the parade?
I'd be happy to join you.
Fantastic. Um, chatting with Officer Grain, uh, the request was to follow the band. I'll get there early in front of, uh, the church on Hilliard. And, uh, I, I will have an SUV with the board sign on it. And, uh, if you want to ride in the vehicle, ride. If you want to walk, walk. And I understand the rules are no candy, but we can certainly greet people we see along the way.
Ooh, that's going to be rough.
I know.
We're going to have some angry children.
I will, uh, like to take this opportunity to thank the Wesleyan Demon Athletic Boosters and the families and students who volunteered last Saturday to clean up the University Hospital, St. John Medical Center Stadium in anticipation for graduation this Saturday. Um, it looks very nice. How was I going to get up there and look around? I did not volunteer, so I don't want you to think I did. But I was up there for other reasons. I also wanted to thank all the staff and family members who also helped put on a very successful prom. Um, that took place over at, uh, Market Square, uh, facility over there in Cracker Park, uh, very well received. The food was catered, it was very good. Uh, the venue was very good as well. Uh, students seemed like they had a very good time. Along with, uh, after prom. Uh, so again, thanks to the staff that were there, uh, and the parents, uh, who also volunteered and would be part of the, uh, the after prom. Uh, again, very well received for all of that. So a lot of, a lot of time in the family. I'm sorry, a lot of time and energy goes into planning those things, especially, um, students and families involved. And so, thank you. I know my, my boys enjoy it.
I'd, I'd also like to, uh, tell you about the Board of Education scholarships that were presented last Thursday. First of all, it was very nice to even be back there in person this year because last year, I think Mr. Wilson just presented them, uh, via Zoom meeting. Um, so we had two recipients at $1,500 each. Quinn Miller and Angela Rose and their applications were delightful, uh, cute senses of humor that they have. And, uh, I think very, uh, disturbing, uh, did I say disturbing? Deserving, deserving students. Uh, it was a wonderful ceremony. There were a lot of scholarships given out and it's that, uh, next to the commencement, I think are my two favorite uh, events to attend. And Joe was there also.
I thought it was a five-year forecast from one of your.
Sorry to disappoint.
Okay, any other comments or items? Right? I just, I'd like to, uh, kind of close and just saying, thanking everybody, including my fellow board members and everyone in the room and who's viewing online. This was a, a long meeting after a long day. So we appreciate, um, all of your efforts here and time and attention. Uh, it doesn't go unnoticed. Okay, any other items? Hearing none? Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Hopkins, roll call.
To adjourn at eight 26 PM. Kraft?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stole?